Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's special call meeting for the CSD Board of Trustees. We appreciate everyone showing up in person and online. So we'll go ahead and get going. Without objection, we will approve the agenda for tonight's meeting. Hearing none, agenda is approved. Dr. Quinn, do you want to do the next item?
Yes, absolutely. So thank you for a special call meeting. Normally, it's a work session night and we're on the floor, but tonight we have a couple of things that we have to handle for a vote. And so we're going to start out with something light, though. Every year at our first meeting in August, we always have our back-to-school welcome video, and Mr. Dillon's going to come forward and go over that.
So as we do each year, first of all, good evening, Board. Dr. Quinn, as we do each year, Dr. Quinn and I make sure we go around to every school to start the year. We get images, we get videos, and then we compile them into a little back-to-school video. So I'm going to go ahead and play that for you.
All right, so short and sweet, but we really did have a very full day. It took probably eight hours for us to get to every school on that first day. We started very early. Brian, as you can see, started at five in the morning with the bus drivers out in the bus lot. So it was a fun day, and again, we thank our teachers and our parents for making it small without a hitch. So thanks, Brian, for showing that. Next up on the agenda, we also have Mr. Dillon coming forward. Tonight's agenda, there's going to be a theme about construction, about growing, about what we're having to do to prepare for the students who are coming our way. And one of the things that our cabinet has been working on is what we're calling the playbook for opening three schools in 2026. And I've talked to our friends in Fort Mill. They open two schools or a school every two years, but I don't know anybody around us that has tried to open three schools in the same year. So we felt like we needed a plan way in advance to do that. And so the playbook is what we're going to share with you tonight. So, Mr. Dillon, if you would take us away.
Thank you, Dr. Quinn. So throughout last year, we did a number of things to really put this preparation into motion, to make sure that we could be as thoroughly prepared as possible as we move through to August 2026 in the opening of three new schools. So within this playbook, you know, that was the main purpose. We wanted to make sure we were ready for the process and everything that would come along with it. So we took multiple steps to get there. First, as Dr. Quinn mentioned, speaking with multiple districts to get some feedback, organize and meet together as a group to brainstorm the things that we would need to go into this process, and then organize it in a way that we could really follow through on and make sure we had everything very easily readable and able to follow along with. So step one, like Dr. Quinn said, we met with multiple districts. We spoke with Spartanburg District Five. They finished up a bond referendum, and they are in the building process of a couple of schools and some renovations as well. So they're kind of close like us in Lake Fort Mill. Fort Mill School District, we spoke to them, and then we spoke with a principal in Virginia who recently opened a new school and talked through some of the things that they did to make sure that they were ready to open their school. So that was step one. After we went through that information, we gave that back and we came together as an administration group and had two different admin retreats early this year to make sure that we could all talk through the things in our separate areas that would be important to make sure that we were on top of going through this process. So we spent one whole day working on what we would need for Lake Wiley High School. And then after that, we had a second date where basically we used a lot of that information that we did for Lake Wiley High School to put on paper what we would need to do for Roosevelt Middle School and what we would need to do for Liberty Hill Elementary School as well. And then the last thing we did was compile everything that we did into software system to make sure that it was really easy to break down, very clear on whose role, who had each role, what the timeline was. And then within it, it allows files to be uploaded, commentary to be made, and really track everything with charts to make sure that we are on time and we are adhering to the due dates that we put in place at the beginning of this year. So we'll get through into that a little bit more now. That software that we use, we pick the Monday.com software, allow us to organize each of the projects, create Gantt charts, assign roles. There's some automated reminders in there. We're able to create those timelines, upload documents, designate priorities, and then notify upon completion. So that's what we chose, and then we spend a lot of time organizing it. So how would it go in there? What sections would it be in? We listed each of the projects. So you've got the three main building projects: Liberty Hill Elementary, Roosevelt Middle, and Lake Wiley High School. And then we organized each of those into specific areas that would help us individually go through and know what was going to be in our area and what we need to do in each of those. So those key areas that we designated were student assignment, staffing, academics, student life, finance, and communication. So I'm going to walk you a little bit through each of those and some of the things that we've kind of put into those areas. So for student assignment, each school is listed with multiple tasks. So as you can see on this screen, Lake Wiley High School has 14 tasks. Liberty Hill Elementary has 15 tasks, and Roosevelt Middle School has 11 tasks. So populating the school with students is going to be one of those key processes that requires a clear timeline, and the process, we did repeat for each of those three schools. Within each school, there's a specific set of things that we need to accomplish and we need to have completed. So when you dig down in there and take a deeper look, you can see there's a couple of things already done on there. So I know that Matt and Ross have worked to renew our GIS software, so we have the most up-to-date software when we plug our students in and where they're going to be located. So when it comes time to start populating those schools and really put the work in to make sure they're ready, we have the software. We need to do that. Implement level data, making sure that everything is in the same across the board in each area. So it's very important to have very good data when we go through this. So that's another task that's already been done in preparation for that task later on down the road. Establish capacities and establish target sizes for two years. So within Lake Wiley High School, that's just a sample of some of the tasks that we've already inputted into the system, given it due dates, assigned owners, and will continue to be working on. Next, we talked about staffing, and obviously that'll fall into Ms. Saul's area of expertise. Creating an intentional plan for staffing each of the three schools is essential to make sure that we're prepared. What does that look like for moving staff over to a new school? What is that process like? How is that going to be determined? What do the principals need to know about who will get priority to move or who will need to go where and different things? So setting up those rules are part of that process. So when we go into it, again, with each school, there's three, it's pretty much done three times over with some differences within each of them, but it allows us to check off for each school to make sure we've completed those processes. So one of those tasks here you see is establish certified and classified ratios. What do we want that to look like? Student-to-teacher ratio within Liberty Hill Elementary, and then we'll also do that for the other two as well. Establish a transfer policy, just kind of talked about that a little bit. Implement staffing standards and then develop a master list. So again, you see a sampling of some of the tasks that are in there for Ms. Saul's and for her team to really focus on and develop, so they'll have the ability to put that down in a rule, an administrative rule, if they so choose, and upload that into the software. So all that information is readily available for us to look through and make sure that we are following when we get there. Academics. The academic tasks include considering whether there needs to be special programs that are created, acquiring instructional materials like textbooks, and building master schedules. Dr. Dickey and Mr. Ruth have a lot in these areas for each of the three schools that they will be working on throughout the next two years as we get ready for the opening of the schools. Within there, things like determine courses and special programs that'll be offered. What might we do to differentiate Clover High School and Lake Wiley High School? What we need to have the same, all those sorts of things will be considered over the next two years as we move towards that opening date, and then determine for Lake Wiley High School, what will be the on-campus CTE programs, basically some of those initial programs before you start going back and forth from what will be a rebranded CTE from the current Clover High School Applied Technology Center. Additionally, though, we had information about student life. Student life includes information about athletics at the high school and middle school, yearbooks, PTO and SIC committees, and more. So we really got intentional, make sure we broke down that. A lot of this does fall into Mr. Ruth and Dr. Dickey's area again, so those are things that they'll be working on with their teams as we develop that process, like with the others. Each school is sectioned out and has specific tasks. Some of them here, determine the process for selecting SIC. Now, this one will be something different for the first year because SIC does have rules that you have to follow each year, but making sure how we get that set up for the first year is going to be an important task that will help a new principal establish prior to getting started.
You might want to tell people what SIC stands for.
Yes, the SIC is the School Improvement Council, and those are voted on each year by members of the school population, and those folks help with various tasks throughout the year. Determine clubs and sponsors and then develop a student council. So we're talking about, this is just a couple of examples for Roosevelt Middle School. Under finance, this obviously falls under Mr. Love and his team. They've got to have plans for new schools that include requesting a state code. That's how the state knows which school they're working with. Inventorying items that we have so we know what can transition to a new school, and then how much we'll need for the new schools in addition to what we already have, and then developing the operating budget, which obviously is a big task that you all will be included in as well. Take a look at a couple of examples. Obtain inventory from various departments of items to be ordered. That's for Liberty Hill Elementary School. And then get a beds code for the new school. So the beds code is what is that differentiation at the state level for the school. And then lastly, in communications, that'll be myself and Stephanie, along with the schools themselves, because of social media and those things that will help create for them. But those tasks include announcing new administrators. When is that going to occur? Planning ribbon-cutting ceremonies, holding meetings to discuss attendance lines, because that'll be a big part that we do with the community and bringing them, let them know what our plans are, what it's looking like, and having a timeline for that information, and then announcing those lines. Going to be very important pieces. Couple of those things you'll see. Conduct a Lake Wiley High School groundbreaking ceremony. Obviously, we did that, so that is checked off in the done category. Communicate rebranding, if we need to do that for BEA, CVA, or like, because if we're with not being all Eagles anymore, does that need to be something that we look at? And then create a communications plan to support the development of attendance lines. So those are just some examples of the things that we will need to be doing in the communications department.
I'll just add while he's transitioning, oh, you're on your last side. Several of these things have several substeps. So what you see are the high-level kinds of things that are here. The individuals on our cabinet will be in charge of creating the support documents and the steps that support each of those actions. So just know there'll be a lot added to what you see now, but we do have a really good start and a good comprehensive list of big-picture things we've got to do in every single area that we identified.
Yes, so in those sections, so one of those things will be the branding and the logos for the new schools. And so as you recall, last year when we did the naming of the schools, Stephanie and I brought you a very detailed, date-by-date process of the things we wanted to do, the questions we wanted to ask, the survey details that we wanted to do. So that's an example of that next layer of information that we would upload into the system to accompany the bit about, you know, rebranding the schools. So as we go through those steps, and those are all developed, that'll be uploaded to the system to make sure that they are available for Dr. Quinn to view as she needs to, members of the cabinet team to view, and then obviously we'll make sure that those are available to you. And then as public records, they would technically be available to the public as well.
So teaser for September's work session, Brian. You might want to tell us what you're going to do.
So we're going to talk you through the steps that we've begun to put in place for the branding and what our new schools are going to look like. Obviously, we named them last year, and we told you that we'd go through a branding process. So things like dates and times of sitting down with an artist in a classroom to kind of go through a design process, getting feedback from student body, getting votes from student body on their favorites, and going through steps like that to then revise any drafts, to add different elements. We've had some great meetings with marketers and artists already. To get some details on how that might work, we're going to conduct an RFP process to make sure we award that within code for procurement here very shortly. We met on that last Friday, and we're going to tell you more about what that process will look like in September and how it'll be detailed and laid out further within the software for our opening schools playbook. Any questions?
Mr. Dillon, I know that you had to do a framework and you had to put names down, but some of these jobs, it seems like, are some of these jobs going to switch hands when you get a new principal and athletic director? Because like, for example, we've got Mr. Ruth developing schedules for fall sports, for example. And I'm sure he's capable of doing that, but doesn't that seem like some of these jobs might be better suited for the new principal and AD whenever they get hired?
Yes, that's absolutely what will happen. We'll go ahead. Once those hires are made, that still will fall into student life, to which obviously Mr. Ruth's title kind of is going to incorporate all of that. So he'll work with them directly, make sure they know the things that we've laid out and the timelines that they have, so they can complete those, report back to him.
I know he's more than capable. I just, it seemed like he's got a lot of other stuff to do in maybe some of these jobs. I know we just haven't hired those folks yet.
Sure, absolutely. That's correct. Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
The questions, Board? This was one of our strategic priorities from this past school year, as you remember. So I'm really happy with the progress we've made and look forward to really implementing the system this year. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Dr. Quinn.
All right, now shifting gears, so we've talked about operations and what it's going to take to open those schools. Let's talk about actually the building of those schools now and where we are with a lot of the projects that we have coming up. We've had renovation as well as new schools. So Kelly Clayton's here with Leitner Management Group to talk through some of the funding and budget for all the construction we have going.
Thank you, Dr. Quinn. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, and others. Haven't been here in a while, so good to be back. Hope everyone had a less stressful and hectic summer break than I did. Tonight, Dr. Quinn and Dr. Hopkins, and I thought it would be a good time to give everyone an update on where we stand financially on all the building projects that are underway. So tonight, the numbers that you will see, can everyone hear me? The numbers that you see will be, that are encumbered on the succeeding slides, are encumbered through the end of the fiscal year, so through June 30th. And then the numbers that are shown as projected are numbers that we are projecting to be encumbered by the end of this month, okay? So jumping into it, oh goodness, okay. Start with Bethany. So this was one of the capital fund projects. If you all recall, Bethany started back in '22, and obviously, the revised construction budget is more than what the Board approved back in February of '22. But almost $700,000 less, I guess I'll click that one. Where we ended up was about $700,000 less than the revised budget after we awarded it to Shellco, okay? The bulk of that was the general contractor's contingency that came back to the owner that did not get spent. And then the FFNE and technology line items came in significantly less. So kudos to those folks for coming in under their budgets. So not as bad as it was originally projected, but still, obviously, more than what the original amount was. The only outstanding expense that is shown projecting on this one, and that's what the little P means, at the expense, was we're still just trying to wrap up the final cost for Jumper Carter Sees, the architect on design fees. Jumping into the other capital project was the Clover High School renovations. This one was obviously a multi-phase project, and I'd like to spend a minute here, if I could, just to talk through the many phases of this project. As you know, this was originally intended to be a cement risk project, but after the first phase came in over budget, we decided to shift gears and go to a design bid build. In addition to that, we actually added scope. We added a track refurbishment, demo and replacement to a larger track as part of this project that was not in the original scope. And you can see where we're at as far as financials go. It's tracking really well with all the phases. I would like to just point out, to me, this was a huge success story for the district, given the economic conditions that we're all in that you see every day at the grocery store, right? And as we know, what we've heard on Lake Wiley High School. So this was really, I think, a win for the district to be able to pull this off on the original $17 million budget that was approved back in '22. And I'd also like to recognize Faulkner Development here, if you would, for what they, they're out of York, and what they're Development here, if you would, for what they, they're out of York, and what they pulled off on the traffic loops. That was an extremely tight timeline to get the high school and ninth-grade campus loops reconfigured over a seven-week period. And had it not been for about 12 and a half inches of rain the last two weeks of school, from July 18th to
Of summer.
Of summer, excuse me. From July 18th to August 1st, when the first day of school was, the Rock Hill Airport reported, reported 12.7 inches of rain. So to just battle through all that, I think they did a really heck of a job. And I know there were some frustrations that, that, that came out with not having that work completed, and not having an open house for the ninth-grade campus on the original time, and having to use the high school loop for freshman first day. I, I realize there were some frustrations, but really, what, what that crew did to get that thing done by August 1st was, was really amazing. So anyway, you can see where we are financially. The only projections there really have to do with the Fitness Center, which is the only project that's kind of lagging. And if you haven't been out there in a while, we, we're finally getting a roof on. So work should hopefully pick up here this month with work underneath the roof and start really seeing some progress. So. The next one was the Fine Arts Edition, which was impact fee money. This project is just getting underway with most of the efforts so far just been on utilities with the new water line coming out from Highway 55, and then some, some utility relocations that we had to do in the courtyard itself. But it's, it's, it's coming along. You should start seeing some footings in the next few weeks, hopefully. And from a financial standpoint, we are slightly over with the construction budget, and that was due to that water line alternate. But in totality, you can see, we're still projecting it to be within the 5.1 original project budget. Okay, so tracking along pretty well on that one as well. Onto the, the Bond Project, Lake Wylie High School. So if you recall, back in, back in May, this project was awarded to Contract Construction at just over $144 million, which included six ad alternates and in the accelerated schedule alternate. And at that time, the project team was given the directive to value engineer as much as we could out of it to try to bring the construction costs back in line. So as a result of that VE process, the only alternate that, that we ended up formally accepting was the accelerated schedule. And we ended up finding about $10.5 million in value engineering on the project to come to a final contract amount of 123,626,806. So that's the amount that we entered into a contract with Contract Construction, and they really need to get a new name for their company. But Contract Construction is the, is the general contractor, and we did enter into a, enter into a contract with them last week. Okay? So the amounts that you're seeing reflected on the slide are projecting that contract with Contract Construction, as well as an additional $5 million and some change for athletic improvements that we have yet to design and bid. So that's part of the 149,862 that you see as being projected.
Those are the ball fields.
And that's the, the ball fields, the softball, the baseball, the track, the turf, if we, if we can afford turf, those type improvements, band field, those type things. Okay, so those are the athletic improvements outside the building itself that we still have to put out for bid. Okay? And then as far as the FFNE and IT and the soft costs, as we call it, owner expenses, those are all just projected to be spent, or at least the FFNE and the technology costs, those are all just being projected to be spent at 100%. Okay? We're too early in the game to know exactly where those costs are going to come in yet. So we're just projecting that every, every dime is spent on FFNE and technology. So you can see, we're looking at a shortfall somewhere of around $4 million at this point. Okay? The asterisk, just in case anyone is curious, that's just showing that we shifted the, the balance of contingency that was shown on the district's website into construction. So now, if you go to the district website, that should be updated to reflect these numbers. And thank Mr. Dillon for doing that. Okay? And then the last one is Liberty Hill, which Dr. Hopkins will get into a little more detail later this evening. I just wanted to give, again, a quick overview of what the, what the budget was and where the, where the base bid, low base bid came in at. The low base bid was, was right around $43 million. I'm projecting a 43-4 contract, assuming an alternate gets awarded. But again, that's subject to change based on what is discussed in a few minutes with Dr. Hopkins and his presentation. But if you, if you're awarded somewhere in the 43-4 range, and again, making the assumption that you're spending 100% of your FFNE and your technology monies, you can see, we're right, right on the, the edge of, of the budget on that one. Okay? And again, the asterisk is just denoting that we shifted contingency on the website to construction to cover those costs. So I know that was a very quick and high-level overview. If there's any questions, I'll attempt to answer those at this time.
Was the tennis court in the Clover High School renovations?
Yes, and I guess I should have gone through the projects, but the Clover High School renovations included the new tennis courts, the traffic loops, the track, the commons renovations. If you haven't seen that, I would encourage you to go look at that. I think it turned out
It's nice.
absolutely wonderful for that project. And I'm missing one track.
The media center.
Yeah, the commons and media center renovations.
Yeah.
Traffic loops, tennis and track. Yeah.
Dr. Quinn, are we still having issues with the traffic in the afternoon, or did the steps that we took to improve it, did that help?
The steps improved it immensely. What we had to do was stagger the exit at the end of the day, so the ninth-grade campus and the Clover High School campus aren't exiting at the same time. There's about a 10 to 12-minute difference. And that really helped our students in the back part of that campus get off, get out and get onto 55 before some of the other main traffic is coming. I can't remember the last time I checked it, but they were off-campus by about 4:20, 4:30 the other day, and that's a big improvement from.
So that parking lot completely empty by 4:20?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
And we did a drone flyover, too, for what it's worth, for afternoon pickup. Mr. Seif's traffic stacked up onto Highway 55, and actually, it didn't. So knock on wood, that doesn't happen down the road. But seems to be enough stacking for both schools at this point.
So once that loop, once it's fully operational and, and running as it should be, is there an opportunity, or is there a way to access Clover High School once people start lining up for the afternoon pickup? That seems to be a common complaint, is that you can't get into the office or into the front parking lot after people start lining up.
Correct. And that, that would be an issue at ninth-grade campus and Clover High, once traffic backed up to a certain point. So there is enough stacking at Clover High, if you stayed in one lane, to go all the way through the loop, which is in front of ninth-grade campus and back, and allow traffic to get into the parking lot if they do show up during stacking. But once they start to double stack in front of both schools, then that does block the entry lane to get to the front door for that 30-minute period, or however long it stays double stacked.
It was the same way before, though, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Oak Ridge, Elementary.
I think there was some expectation that perhaps it would be, would have been
Split in some way, or there's a shortcut in. Yeah, there's not a shortcut in this point.
Fortunately not.
You come at the wrong time, you will go through the loop and around. But, and that's true at several of our schools as well. But. Other questions for Mr. Clayton?
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Thank you all.
And last but not least, will be the Liberty Hill Elementary School bids. This is to actually be able to enter into a contract with a bidder, or with a builder, excuse me, contractor. Dr. Hopkins, if you would walk us through the bid process.
Good evening, everyone. Good to see everybody tonight. I'm going to talk you through the bid tab and your options for awarding construction of Liberty Hill Elementary School tonight. We'll begin with the bid tab. You can see, we had four bidders. The low bid, base bid was 43,110, and the high bidder was over $50 million, 50.286. So based on the base bid, you can see that there is a low bidder, but we also had three alternates, which were broken into this bid. The first one was the classroom addition. This is 12 classrooms on the end of a wing that we had initially cut to make sure we were within budget. So that classroom addition, you can see the range in there was between about $3,600 and $4.1 million. The second alternate, which was the same alternate that we discussed with the Lake Wylie High School, was the inclusion of a geothermal HVAC system with the wells, et cetera, that we had discussed previously at Lake Wylie. You can see, there was a range of, of prices within that bid as well. And the third alternate was the epoxy terrazzo flooring, which is, has been the standard for our school district for many years. So the, so the public areas would be that terrazzo, which is the stone look that's shaved down, kind of like a concrete with the speckles in it. So those three alternates were offered. So as we look through each of the opportunities here, and how these add up, we have come up with four options that the board has tonight to make an award, if you wish to do so, based on a scenario of, of different alternates involved with the base bid. So option one, which the board could do, would be to award EdCon Construction the base, at their base bid amount, an amount not to exceed $43,110,000. And that is simply the base bid, without any of the three alternates that I discussed. Option two would award to EdCon Construction, which would be the base bid plus alternate three, which is the terrazzo I just mentioned to you, in an amount not to exceed $43,393,413. Option three would also go to EdCon Construction, which would be the base bid plus alternates one, the classrooms, and three, the terrazzo, in the amount not to exceed $47,178,413. Option four, including the geothermal, would go to Swinerton Builders. And that would be the base bid plus alternate one, the classrooms, alternate two, the terrazzo, and alternate three, the geothermal heating and cooling system, in an amount not to exceed $48,550,000. So each of these options addresses the potential of all or some of the alternates being awarded, and the amount that is impacted up or down by those alternate awards.
Board, I'll just add that in the original plans for Liberty Hill Elementary School, in the first bond referendum, we were trying to build a 900-student elementary school, similar to, in size to Oak Ridge Elementary School, which is the last one we've built, understanding that there is a tremendous amount of growth coming in that part of our community. These 11 classrooms that are, excuse me, 12 classrooms that are here, is that basic same design that had those, that had the 900 students. Without that, it's about 700 students, so it would be a smaller school. And that's the difference. That's that particular alternate. And it's just a matter of what the board feels like in terms of growth that would be, and what we can afford to do for your decision on that one. Terrazzo, you've done a good job explaining that. Our custodians enjoy the fact that they clean very easily and, and last. And the geothermal is something that is new to us, but something very, very attractive. It's a process of heating and cooling that could potentially pay for itself. So all three of those are good alternates, so the board is welcome to give us feedback on which of those you would prefer.
Could you give us an educated guess as to when you would need those extra classrooms if you didn't build them now?
Without knowing the exact study on the part that I'm working on with the student assignment, given the growth that we know is coming in that area, it would be within a couple of years likely, that we would feel some pressure without having to adjust some lines again potentially.
So the idea is for this to be completed by April 2026, right?
That's the, I think
March.
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 Is the time we're looking for, the timeline. So to be completed at that time, it would include, if you concluded that alternate, everything would be done at that time. It would fit within that timeline to add that alternate.
The other maybe thoughtful thing to consider is, if we have to go back and add it later, it will be an active school with an active construction site.
Well, and
And it'll cost more.
And you think, too, if you, if you look at the price given in the bid tab, and you kind of project, okay, we're in the process of building a new fine arts wing at the future Roosevelt Middle, Middle School, which includes just a chorus and band room and a percussion room. That wing is 5.2 million. I think it's about 3.8 on the base bid, or on the, somewhere between 3.8 and 4.1.
3.75.
So there is some savings in doing it now versus coming back and doing it later, in addition to the fact that it would be an active school site.
We're looking at 12 classrooms versus what we had to do at Bethany, just to get five.
We had, we had four classrooms and a collaborative space there.
Collaborative space.
And that was 7 million.
Right.
Almost eight.
We can see the potential in the savings now.
Yes, ma'am. And, and, you know, I think we've shared with you in the past some of the projected residential areas that are being developed, and most are within that zone. So we really believe, like, the rate of growth will probably be a little bit faster, as it always is in the Lake Wylie side, specifically in Southern Lake Wylie, down that corridor, 274 corridor.
And as far as the geothermal, we're currently not doing that at the new high school with cost constraints.
That's correct.
So I'm not sure how much sense it would make to do it at the elementary school and not the high school. And if we bite that chunk, you're talking about a lot of
Correct. And if, when we originally designed that as an option, and thinking through high school and elementary school, we designed the wellfields to be shared. A certain degree of those wellfields would be given to the elementary school. So there is some shared cost between those. And that's not necessarily every penny reflected in this, but there would be some shared costs and some savings in the geothermal because of that shared cost between the high school and the elementary.
But if we only did it here at the elementary school, it, it wouldn't be enough to share with the high school. We would have to add funds
Correct.
if we chose to do that with the high school as well.
And we'd have to do it before
Beforehand.
Really, the big expense is the wellfields. You know, I think 144 per field and three fields, one, two fields, 144, and one of those two fields would be shared with the, with the elementary school. So those, you think 144, they're probably 450 feet deep. That, that's where your, most of your expense comes with the
And then the terrazzo aesthetics and ease of clean.
Ease, the custodians love it.
Right.
The older schools, there are parts of the high school, and I think Bethany, Kiner, that staff parts that are the old CVT, which are the little one-by-one square tiles, those are stripped and waxed every summer. Those have sort of evolved into what a product that's called LVT, Luxury Vinyl Tile, which is a plank-style tile. That does not require waxing. Neither does terrazzo. But terrazzo has some staying power beyond vinyl tile. I'll give you an example. Dr. Quinn had mentioned before, if you go to Kiner, that tile is original to that building, excuse me, the terrazzo is original to that building, and it's still looking pretty doggone good, some 50, so, I mean, however many years later. So terrazzo is a, it's, it's an expense on the front end, but it does have some benefits on the back end, in terms of aesthetics, in terms of maintenance, and in terms of durability and last, the time that it lasts.
So we could potentially look at one and three without going to the taxpayer for those dollar amounts. We can cover those things. The geothermal, though, we would have to go back and look at the high school in order to make that make sense, correct?
I believe so. We're, we're within our ability right now, without having to ask for anything else.
Unfortunately, the geothermal's not something you can do later.
Yeah.
You have to
It's either now or never.
It's just got to be on the front, and you can't come back and add it. I guess you could, but it would be really expensive.
And the cost was significantly more than this cost if we were to go do that.
I would imagine so, yes. I don't know for sure what the amount would be, but it would undoubtedly be more expensive.
I think the high school was in the four.
It was like four and a half, five million, something.
Yeah, I think it was 4,750
Yeah.
was the bid for the geothermal for Lake Wylie High.
If, if costs were not so tight, it's a great option. But with costs being very tight, it's something that you're right to, to kind of look at and make sure we can stay with it. make sure we can stay within the millage rate that we've tried to stay for our community.
What's the cost difference in the flooring?
It's, I think the, it was a 220, excuse me, that was Swinerton for, Swinerton was $225, and EdCon was $283.
I mean, for terrazzo versus the other type?
Oh, the other, the LVT tile, what we value engineered that out of the high school, except in the main entrance area, and I think the savings was $279, I think it was, about $279.
Okay, thank you.
The base bid would have the LVT in it, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, so I think that would be, this is just, would be a...
Upcharge.
Between $225 and $283 upcharge.
Okay.
Correct. I'm sorry, I didn't understand what you were asking. Forgive me.
Any other questions from the board? From what I'm hearing, without objection, the board will award to EdCon Construction base bid plus alternates one, which is 12 classrooms, and alternate three, the terrazzo, in the amount not to exceed $47,178,413. Hearing no objections, request is approved.
Thank you very much. We will get to work as soon as we can. Any other questions?
Thank you.
That concludes tonight's meeting. Is there any executive session? I don't think, I think we've finished, so that concludes tonight's meeting. Thank you, everybody, for being here. Have a good evening.
Thank y'all for coming.